I don't think he's paying attention.
He's muted. You're muted, Dave.
Hey Debbie, did you make me co-host?
I will do that right now.
Okay.
Technology, you gotta love it. I just want to do a quick roll call. I saw Bill Romer pop up. I know he's there. Is Beth Bingham here?
Yes, she is.
She's muted.
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. And Casey Weinstein, are you there too?
Yes.
There you go. Okay, and I believe Joe Campbell is not going to be present, according to no response that I didn't get.
Okay.
Hey, you'll all be happy to know that the new floor is going into the community room today. So if we ever get back to a normal society, I would love to have us back in that room again, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the the upgrades that we've made down there after the flood of Labor Day.
Nick, Mayor, was that right under City Hall, the the community room down there?
Yes. You've been down there, Mr. Romer?
Oh, yes, I've been there. It's it's Bill, as you know.
I'm sorry. My mom, my mom would kill me if I didn't start with Mr. or Mrs., so.
I know, but when we play each other on the basketball court, and I know your entire family, it's a little different.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. My name's Stephen Boginsky. I'm the this year's president of the Rotary Club in Nordonia Hills. Thank you, everybody. I don't think John Graves is here, is he? I don't see him anywhere. All right, I will do the invocation then unless somebody else would like to do a prayer. Any volunteers? Oh, everybody's nervous about that, huh?
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay, go ahead. Please do.
Sure. Father God, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity to be together, Lord. We just pray that you lead us and guide us, Lord. Help us to love one another deeply. Help us to see each other with your eyes. In what we know not, teach us, and what we are not, make us, Lord. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Beth. Very good. Pledge of Allegiance, if anyone could join me in the pledge of allegiance. Debbie, if you could throw a virtual flag up for us? There we go. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would like to introduce our guests today. We have three speakers all running for office. We have Beth Bingham. Thanks for joining us, Beth.
Thank you for having me.
We have Bill Romer. Thank you, Bill, for joining us.
You're welcome.
And we have Casey Weinstein. Thank you, Casey.
Thanks for having me.
Do we have any other guests that I don't know or did not acknowledge? Okay. Today in history. Let's see. I pulled up a few things here. On October 13th, the cornerstone is laid for a presidential residence in the newly designed capital of Washington, DC. This was in 1792 on October 13th. In 1800, President John Adams became the first president to reside in the Executive Mansion, what soon became known as the White House. That was in 1772, or 1792, October 13th. That's when the White House was established. In 1947, US Air Force Captain Chuck Yeager became the first person to fly faster than the speed of sound. That was in 1947 on October 14th. Yeager was born in West Virginia in 1923, and he was a combat fighter during World War II and flew 64 missions over Europe. He shot down 13 German planes, and was himself shot down over France, but escaped capture with the help of the French Resistance. So I thought that was pretty interesting. Two more. October 17th, 1931, Al Capone goes to prison for tax evasion. That was all they could get him for at the time. And also, everyone's got to remember this, in 1989, there was an earthquake. It became a pretty famous, not because of the earthquake, but for what was seen on TV. Does anybody remember what that was?
It was at Dodger Stadium.
Yep, yep. On October 17th, the Bay Area was buzzing about baseball. Oakland A's and San Francisco Giants, both local teams, were participating in the third game of the World Series. And at 5:30, Candlestick Park started to shake. It became known as the Loma Prieta Earthquake, because that's where it was centered at. The city's Marina District suffered the greatest damage because it was built before 1972, but that was a famous earthquake. That's all I got in this day in history. Okay, as far as history for our Rotary Club, Diane Gentile was born on October 13th. Happy birthday to Diane. And I was born October 17th, so happy birthday to me. One more day.
Happy birthday.
I don't look a day over 50, do I? We also have a couple of anniversaries this week. Paul Jackson and Donna Jackson. October 16, 2010, and Peggy Spragons and Larry Spragons, 46 years, October 18, 1974. So happy anniversary to them. Do we have some humor, Dr. Conkle?
Yes, Steve, we do, and in honor of you growing old, it's just for you. You know when you're growing old, when one for the road means taking a pee before you leave. Hell, I do that going up the steps. I gotta take one for the road.
That's pretty funny. I don't see the humor in that at all. Okay, Dave, if you could introduce our candidates, we might as well get right into that.
There you go. Testing, one, two, three.
You're working now.
All right, all right. Okay, we have candidates for our state representative districts, and we're going to go in order, numerical order. The first district we're going to discuss is the 37th District, which covers Macedonia, Northfield Village, and part of Northfield Center and Hudson. We have two candidates that are running. The incumbent is Casey Weinstein, and his opponent is Beth Bingham. And we're going to start off with Beth. And being that we have the time that we have, we're going to go 10 minutes with with each candidate, and then open it to the floor for questions and answers. After the questions and answers, we'll move on to the 38th District. I will be timing it for you. At nine minutes, I'll let you know that it's nine minutes. So you'll be able to come to close. So at this time, I'd like to introduce our 37th District State Representative Candidate, Beth Bingham.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay, super. Well, I prepared five minutes worth of comments, so we'll see if we stretch that out to 10. Good afternoon, Rotarians and guests. It's a great pleasure to be with you today. As we survey the impact of the pandemic and the economic downturn on Ohioans today, there are many areas that will require the diligence and hard work that I have demonstrated during my time of service on City Council and throughout my years in healthcare. First, COVID-19 has forced us to confront head-on several unprecedented challenges, including the loss of jobs, small businesses, and entire industries struggling to survive, schools scrambling to give Ohio's children a quality education, while also keeping our kids safe, mental health issues, including increased depression, anxiety, suicide, and drug use, delays in medical treatments, and the growing number of COVID-related deaths. And we are not out of the woods yet. I will bring a unique background to the State House. With over 20 years' experience in healthcare, I have worked as a nurse practitioner, a small business owner with a healthcare MBA, and I have the experience of serving as a public health educator and policymaker. I am adept at triaging and managing risks, controlling infection risk, and compassionately caring for the sick. These skills carry over to rewriting public health policy. I look forward to putting my two decades of experience in medicine, public health, and policymaking to finding ways to mitigate the burdens this virus has placed on all Ohioans. Recognizing that small business owners and employees have suffered extraordinary economic hardships resulting from COVID-19, the economic recovery will be at the top of my agenda as your state representative. We must act now. With no end in sight to this pandemic, loans and subsidies may seem like the only solution, yet it is a short-term and costly temporary fix. We need a solution that is effective in the long term and less costly to taxpayers. As a Hudson City Councilor, I have worked hard to reduce the regulatory burden on our small business community through legislation that has decreased regulation, lessening the economic burden on our restaurants and businesses, and allowing them greater revenue opportunities and the prospect of survival. As your state legislator, I will seek to exempt small businesses from rules which better serve big businesses. Our citizens are suffering financially and need our economy to rebound. We have a healthcare system in serious need of reform. And with important elements of our healthcare system being determined at the state level, I intend to develop and promote health policy that will be relevant to the needs of the residents of Ohio's 37th District. I will support policies which increase the access to quality care. Expand the scope of practice of nurse practitioners to allow them to practice at the top of their license and education. Expand common sense occupational licensing compacts. Expand pricing transparency. Expand access of telehealth beyond the currently declared COVID-19 emergencies. Eliminate imposing certificate of need laws. I intend to work hard to make our healthcare system more responsive. Through changes such as these, we can build healthier communities and lower the cost of healthcare. Next, I support our hardworking men and women in uniform, and do not in any way support the reckless defund the police movement. Our law enforcement officers, the vast majority of whom are hardworking, conscientious professionals, performing a difficult and often dangerous job, deserve our support. While I certainly condemn acts of racial violence and hatred, I also condemn the recent looting of businesses, violent rioting, and attacks and abuse against our law enforcement officers. This scourge has taken a toll on all of America, constituting a lack and an attack on our communities and destroying peace and economic prosperity. While serving on Hudson City Council, I have supported the full funding of our first responders, including the implementation of best practices for recruiting, training, supporting our law enforcement officers, and the funding of body cameras. Education and job training are important tools which propel Ohioans to economic prosperity and stability. I believe that each student is unique, and as such, each has distinct capabilities, learning styles, and goals, and I support offering school choice to each child in the state of Ohio. I intend to work hard to promote educational reforms. A diverse body of learners is best served through a variety of educational choices. Ohio spends nearly $2 billion a year to keep 50,000 people in prison. Many people in our system struggle with substance abuse disorder, while often drug possession is their only crime. I support legislation that eliminates harsh sentencing laws that do not fit the crime. I believe that each of us is created in the image of God, and that he created us for a purpose. Our values, human beings, originate from our Creator. He has fashioned us in our mother's womb, and he numbers our days. The family is the foundation of a strong, stable society, and I am pro-life and will support policies which align with the protection and support of Ohio's families. And finally, Ohio is currently fifth in the country for human trafficking cases. This is completely unacceptable. 20% of human trafficking involves children, and it disproportionately affects females. Although no demographic is immune to the issue, we need to protect our women and children. State and local governments play a key role in preventing human trafficking, dismantling the infrastructure that makes trafficking possible, and directing resources to support and empower survivors. I have already started this dialogue when I led a forum on human trafficking. I will work together with other legislators and law enforcement agencies to create long-lasting change that will upend this system that deals in broken dreams and dirty politics. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning and to share how I am going to serve you in Columbus. I ask for your support during early voting and on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. At this time, I would like to move forward and introduce our state representative for the 37th District, Casey Weinstein. Casey?
Thank you, David. Thank you for having us here today. Again, appreciate it. I'm sorry we can't be in person, but but I'm glad we're able to get together. Just for a very quick background, I'm Casey Weinstein, State Representative for the 37th House District. We go as far south as Gerrymandrid, Slice of Kai, Hoga Falls, and then up through Monroe Falls, Silver Lake, and Stowe, and then, as was mentioned, Hudson, Twinsburg, and the Nordonia area. And then up to Reminderville. I am very happy to be here. I am in my first term. Excited about the accomplishments that we've had in this first term, and that's really what I want to focus on today. The committees that I was assigned to were the Energy and Natural Resources Committee, which heard HB6, which some of you may have questions about. I've definitely spent a lot of time on that bill. I am on the Agriculture and Rural Development Committee, and I'm the ranking member with the senior Democrat on the Armed Services and Veterans Affairs Committee. I was also selected on the HB6 Select Committee, which was recently established by our new speaker to hear the repeal bills for HB6. So that's that's been keeping me busy lately. Again, the theme of my first term has been bipartisanship, and even though I'm a Democrat in the minority in the House, we've been able to work across the aisle, and I've been able to work across the aisle to get things done. So some highlights of that that I wanted to share. The H2 Ohio program on this call, the folks living in this area are in the Lake Erie watershed. And that's been, it's been impaired for years, and it's been a priority for years. We came together in a bipartisan way in an effort led by Governor DeWine, which I was proud to support in the House, and we came came out with a historic down payment on cleaning up the Lake Erie watershed and working with a variety of stakeholders to do that. So that program brought in historic investment over the next couple of years, and those funds are already at work restoring lands, preventing runoff, and upgrading that natural resource and economic powerhouse for us. We also did an infrastructure bill. People talk about infrastructure bills, but we got one done in the House. And one thing that I was proud of was that we tweaked the formula for the funds that went whereby most of it used to go to the state. Now it's a higher percentage are going to local governments. We also reestablished funding to the Local Government Fund. After 10 years of defunding local governments, including defunding our first responders, we were able to restore funds back to local governments, which go toward infrastructure, water projects, first responders, a lot of the frontline government that folks interact with on a daily basis. So we were able to to get a big down payment on that, a big investment in Ohio. We also invested in county wraparound services, so programs that create more equality of opportunity and provide a wide range of services to people in Summit County. That was a $660 million investment that we made that was signed into law in a bipartisan way to fund those services. So those went to a variety of really great programs. As a freshman representative, we had a pretty large freshman class, or new time, first time legislators. I got together with my Republican colleagues and established a bipartisan bus tour whereby we would have hosts and and other representatives who would travel to those districts. We hit all corners of the state through this through this bus tour. And I was able to host one in our district too, and take take a bipartisan group of legislators around the district, and this was an opportunity to expand our perspective and to get to build personal relationships with each other, which helps in lawmaking. And one thing that came out of that was my bill, Madeline's Law, which is an expansion, or its coverage for kids' hearing aids. Right now, a lot of folks are surprised to learn that hearing aids are not covered by insurance for a great many of Ohio's kids. I think Ohio children deserve a right to hear. My colleagues on both sides of the aisle agreed, so I I'm not ashamed to say I lobbied my colleagues through our bus tour, and every Republican who attended the first leg of that bus tour ended up signing on to my bill. So that is a bipartisan effort that we're working on to expand healthcare to children who need it. Electric vehicles, which I think Ohio has an incredible opportunity to to take the lead in. But unfortunately, we have not really taken advantage of that. I've got a couple of bills to work on expansion of EVs in the states that are working their way through the Transportation Committee right now. And one of the great honors and one of the focuses of this first term was being selected as the ranking member on the Armed Services Committee. I'm an Air Force veteran. I come from a military family. So that was a great opportunity to work on on legislation for military families. One key piece that the DOD asked us to work on, they sent us a top 10 list, and Rick Peralas, who's the chairman of the committee, and I spearheaded a bill, a military families bill for licensing and occupational, to expand licensing and occupational reciprocity to active-duty military families who come into the state. So now, when a military family is assigned to Ohio, their spouse's license, whether they be a teacher or a nurse, or dozens of different categories, is now honored so that they they can work. It's a chronic problem among active-duty families. Unemployment is when unemployment nationally was at 4%, the most recent statistic we have for military families was spousal unemployment was over 25%. So it is a very big problem and a financial hit that our military families take. So if you would have told me as a as a super minority Democrat in the House, whether I would get a bill out of the House that was eventually signed into law, I'm not, I'm not sure I would have believed you, but we got it done, and Governor DeWine signed that bill, which became SB7, which was the Senate counterpart of HB 133, and I was able to attend that signing ceremony at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base at the National Museum, Air Force Museum there, where I used to serve, which was a pretty cool full circle moment for me. Very proud of our COVID response as well. I partnered with the Greater Akron Chamber to distribute PPE to small businesses throughout the district, worked with the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank to get food distributed to people in the area. I worked closely with small businesses who, to get them categorized appropriately as essential with the Summit County Health Department to keep them running. We had 250-plus constituent cases that we opened. So a constituent case is when we couldn't do a quick fix for a constituent, and we needed to do a deeper dive to help them get access to care or benefits or work through the system. So I'm really proud of the of the effort that we made through, really starting in March. 250 constituent cases opened and closed. Through that process, worked closely with our medical professionals to make sure that we were educating folks and getting, you know, helping to mitigate the impact of COVID as much as possible in the district, and I'm very proud of my endorsement by the Ohio State Medical Association, which is the largest and premier medical organization in the state. So that that, proud of the work that we've done through COVID. So I've got a lot of plans going forward for for new bills that I want to work on, really working hard to repeal HB6 right now, and then look toward an energy future for Ohio. I hope to have an opportunity to continue working on that in the next General Assembly and continue broadening and deepening relationships with all of my colleagues on both sides of the aisle to get things done and to continue delivering for the district. So thanks.
Thank you, Casey. At this time, we're going to open the floor to questions. Anybody out there have a question for either Beth or Casey? And both candidates, I'd like to have a response to what the question is.
Dave, I got a question. Our school funding issue still is considered unconstitutional in the state of Ohio. It's been that way for a long time. What do you guys plan on doing about it?
I guess I can go first. Well, we passed a bill in the Ohio House, a bipartisan bill to do to to work on school funding. One problem, one big problem that we've got with school funding, and to your point, it's been it's been ruled three times unconstitutional by the Supreme Court, and it's too dependent on local taxpayers, and not enough of the burden is borne by the state. One huge problem is in vouchers. The way that vouchers are done is when a student or a family chooses to move their student outside of a public school district and into a private through a voucher, the funding is pulled from that district and follows that student. And through a quirk in the law, a lot of times districts get more pulled from them than they actually got in the first place. For Hudson, for example, Hudson gets approximately $2,200 per student per year, between $2,200 and $2,400. But if a student leaves a Hudson school with a voucher, $7,000, approximately $7,000 flows from them. So what we did in the House was we we tried to, excuse me, reduce the number of districts that were eligible for vouchers and also keep the funding whole for that district, so that the district would not be punished and put into a vicious cycle of maybe having some financial struggles and then having students leave because of that, and then having less money to to work through the process to get through, to provide higher, better education. We had an agreement, there was some agreement with the Senate to work the bill, and then the Senate unfortunately did not move forward with the legislation. So it's stalled currently, and I guess we have an opportunity in lame duck to to get that done. But that would be my priority first. The first concrete step that we can take, because we've shown we've been able to do it in a bipartisan way, is to fix the voucher system. And then there's a great bill, the Cup-Patterson Reform Bill, Speaker Cup is, well, Cup is now Speaker Cup. We think we have a great opportunity. That's a bipartisan bill with John Patterson and Speaker Cup, where they spent two years building this bill in a bipartisan way, working with stakeholders across Ohio. And I'm hopeful that that bill, which would create much more equity and fairness in funding and provide more state funding and less of a burden on districts, and fix the formula that distorts things and creates a higher burden in some districts than others, can be passed into law as well.
Thank you, Casey. Beth, would you have a response to that?
Sure. I think that, first of all, it's important to work with the experts in the area and really learn about, you know, why haven't we been able to solve this problem so far? It's been determined unconstitutional by the Supreme Court three times. What are the hurdles in making this work? I think I think that's, you know, a key thing. First, you have to figure out like, what is, what exactly is the problem that you're trying to solve, and is it the fact that students who are who are being educated do not have an equal access to quality education? So there are multiple ways that you might solve that, and I would say, Sue, that in regard to the voucher system, that oftentimes, the voucher system is one that actually helps those students who, let's say, the property tax is is such in their area that, you know, they're not as well-funded, and they have an opportunity to travel to a to a different school that is a higher performing. So I believe that, as I mentioned, that each child is unique and have unique capabilities and learning styles, and that as a parent and a taxpayer, I I would think that that those money should follow the child, because that's what we really want to do. We want to educate students, and we want to put students first. So not so much about, you know, hurting schools or or these things, but it's really like, let's put the student at the top, and then we work out all of these other issues.
Thank you, Beth. Before we move on, I just want to acknowledge, I'm going to give each candidate two minutes to respond to the next question, and then we're going to move forward to the 38th District next. So, next question?
I have one, Dave, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
I guess with everything going on in society lately, the question that's on my mind a lot is bipartisanship, and I want to know from both of the candidates what you're going to do to act in a more, I hate to say mature manner, but, you know, in a manner that shows as Americans, we can have differences, but we can still be good to each other. I think right now, it's just too contentious.
Beth, if you could respond to that first?
Sure, I might.
So contentious, but what are the two of you going to do to stop that? So contentious, what are the two you're going to do to stop that?
Okay, so I just caught the end of it. Sure, that's okay. So I think first and foremost, you know, we treat each other as fellow human beings and see value in each other first as human beings. You know, and move on from there. I think oftentimes, you know, when I've talked to, I've knocked on over 33,000 doors so far. And when I talk to folks on, you know, the other side of the aisle, I've been able to convert many of them. And that's because we realize that the solutions, you know, the goal that we're working towards is often very, very similar. It's just how are, what are the policy mechanisms and tools that we're going to use to get there? So I think if we focus on the goal, whether that be, you know, ensuring that each child in Ohio gets a quality education that is valuable and that they can move forward within their life to to become a good citizen and and contribute to society, then then how do we get there? So I think, starting with the goal and then looking at opportunities for solutions where we can, and and policy is. And I know this as having been a policy professor and also being being someone who enacts policy as a Hudson City Council member for the past four and a half years. It is a lot about compromise. So working, working together and that's what I would say. Thanks. I think I just heard a bell.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's a it's a good question. I definitely, I have a track record of that. On city council, it's a nonpartisan council, but, you know, I was the sole registered Democrat. You know, we had, we came together many times to work on bipartisan efforts in the city. So that that was a good proving ground, I'd say, for the State House, where the vast majority of the bills that I have worked on have been bipartisan bills. Some with a Republican joint sponsors, many with Republican co-sponsors. As I mentioned, the budget was a bipartisan process, which it hasn't been for many years. So that's, that was a really great thing. And then through through just establishing personal relationships, that that the bus tour was a big part of that. Going to John Cross's district. John Cross is a pretty conservative guy from a pretty red area of Ohio. I spent the day with him on an 80s rock tour bus that he was somehow able to procure. And we we toured all over the place and just got, we went to the Wilson Football Factory and to their Chamber of Commerce where John had used to work. And that was a great opportunity to meet on a personal level. And through this craziness, John and I still, we communicate, like, there's communication going on with my colleagues, even though what you see out there is can get pretty crazy. And then one bill I want to talk about is what I've tried to do is I focused on where we agree, that intersection of where we agree, even if for different, for different reasons. I have an Energy Star Tax Holiday Bill. I like energy efficiency and I like getting energy efficient appliances, which are the biggest users of energy in a typical household into homes. And I have a colleague who's one of the most conservative guys in the House, who really hates taxes. And he and I worked on this bill together for an Energy Star Tax Holiday. You know, I'm I'm like Captain Planet, trying to save the planet, and he is trying to eliminate taxes, which is fine for this too, in my mind. And we came together and we worked on the bill and it's going through the committee process. So focusing on the intersection and not worrying as much why you're there or why you're agreeing can help. And just working together and move things through the process. So it's been a good thing. I've built some really solid relationships and we're already talking, I'm talking with my Republican colleagues. I talked to one last night about a bill that we want to work on next year together. So that's that's the kind of relationships that I bring in to hope to continue working on.
Thank you, Casey. At this time, I'd like to thank Beth and Casey for coming to Nardonia Hills Rotary Zoom and speaking to us and letting us know where you stand on the that you had there. Thank you.
Thank you all.
We're going to move forward to the 38th District that represents Sagamore Hills, Boston Heights, and part of Northfield Center. And there are two candidates. The incumbent is Bill Romer. And opposing Bill is Joe Campbell. Unfortunately, I had Bill, I'm sorry, Joe Campbell did not respond at all to our letter going out. And so at this time, I'm going to introduce our incumbent, Bill Romer. Bill?
Thanks so much. I appreciate this. While I was waiting here, I was counting. I think this is the ninth time I'm speaking to the Rotary. I think six times on my own from various elections and three times for other candidates, including Congressman Joyce. It's obviously a little bit different than in the past. Just a little bit of background, I was lucky enough to retire as Director of Sales for AT&amp;T and have always tried to give back to the community. I served on Summit County Council for four years, then served on the Summit County School Board called the Summit Education Service Center, the Summit ESC for another three years. Now, this is my second year at the State House. As a freshman, I was assigned to a number of what we would call eight committees. I serve on finance, which is a big commitment, but even bigger, I serve on the Health and Human Services Subcommittee of Finance. And almost 50% of the budget comes through five members of that committee. All of the Health and Human Services related things. I serve on primary and secondary education. Being a certified public accountant, I was also assigned to both Ways and Means, which is taxes and financial institutions, which is all banking and finance. And they decided I wasn't busy enough, so I also serve on long-term care and aging, which has been a huge issue, given everything that's going on with COVID and everything in our healthcare communities. On top of that, I'm chairman of the Tax Expenditure Review Committee. We've talked a little bit about bipartisanship and everything I've done at the State House has been on a bipartisan basis. As a freshman, I passed a number of bills and one resolution. We did pass the resolution in the House to end E-Check in Ohio. We've seen that it costs Ohio almost $11 million, but it's a huge burden on just seven counties in Northeast Ohio. And that passed on a bipartisan basis of 62 to 29. We're waiting for action on that in the Senate, and then we're going to go to the US EPA on that. During the pandemic, I passed a bill unanimously dealing with license reform for nurses, for teachers, for pharmacists, for barbers and others. Because of the inability to meet in person, to teach in person, we changed some of the regulations around licensing for new teachers, for new nurses, added some responsibilities for pharmacists, and that passed unanimously. We expect that to pass quickly in the Senate also. Passed a bill, actually, I think it's going to get signed by the governor next week, a small thing on the Cuyahoga Valley Scenic Railroad. It goes right through the middle of my district. Joe Mazur, the president, and I talked. And they really had difficulty. So we passed a bill that will allow a Cuyahoga Valley Scenic Railroad license plate to at least give a little bit of funds back to the railroad. I think they're starting Polar Express here very shortly. So again, we've worked on a very bipartisan basis. I have a bill pending on CPA licensing reform also to allow our students in Ohio to take the CPA exam after 120 hours of study rather than 150 hours. It's already being done in 37 other states. So given all that, you know, we've worked really, really hard to try to represent the constituents. I have a really interesting district. We're all in the way northern part of my district. My district runs for about 70 miles. It starts at the Cuyahoga County border at Sagamore Hills and and Boston Heights and runs all the way down to Wilmatt and Beach City and Brewster and Canal Fulton and three townships in Stark County. And I'm proud to say that I have gone to every community in the district over the last two years. In fact, I think this was the fifth time I was in Canal Fulton late last week. Listening to constituents, listening to the elected officials, working on the issues. We did pass cares, additional cares funding. And it was great to meet with the township trustees, the mayors, the council people in each of those communities to talk about what they could do with the enhanced cares funding. I don't want to use 10 minutes. I think that's more than enough. And I'm open to any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions out there?
I got one, Dave.
Go ahead.
Bill, you got a long track record of service to us in Sagamore Hills and Ohio. As a freshman legislature, you you got caught up in the House Bill 6 agenda. What'd you learn from it? What would you do differently in the future?
Well, from an HB 6 perspective, of course, there was no quid pro quo. I think I received 2,500 donations from First Energy. I've already, in fact, I think I might have been the first person to donate those to charity. HB 6 has some good components to it, but I have signed on to the, well, there's two different bills to repeal HB 6. I believe HB 6 has to be repealed and replaced. You know, we need to save that 15% of the state's generating capacity, 90% of the carbon free generating capacity. But by the same token, we need to make sure that there are audited standards that Energy Harbor has to adhere to, possibly job guarantees and other things to make sure that if there is any subsidy, I'm not saying that there has to be, but if there is any subsidy, it is going to go only to keep those nuclear plants functioning, paying taxes, employing those workers.
Any other questions?
Am I able to go back and ask a question to Casey and Beth?
If we don't have any questions for Bill, sure, we have the time.
Okay, hi, I'm Paige. Both of your, hi. Both of your agendas align with my profession. I'm an early intervention specialist. So I work with kids, you know, the young ones, because I'm short, that's what I say. And I have a future in health policy in that way. So one thing that I have found interesting in the Ohio State of Representatives is the track record of the speakers of the House. I guess everybody could answer this, but how will you, you know, if elected or reelected, will you go about making sure that the future speakers of the House are, have ethical agendas? And that things kind of, you know, stay, you know, for the good of the people of Ohio?
Sure, I'll go ahead and answer that one first. I would say that we each get a vote on speaker. So you have to use that vote wisely. You have to do your research on who the person is. If they've had past issues, like they've been evaluated by the FBI and and left the House of Representatives under some kind of cloud of of some mistrust, then certainly you would not want to vote for for the speaker. My opponent did vote for Larry Householder. He needed Democrats to vote. As a Republican, Larry Householder did not have enough Republicans to vote for him. He needed that vote from a Democrat and and my opponent voted for him. I think knowing that we can do research and find out about people, about what their past history is, on what terms they left office, it can be very valuable when making a decision that can affect the future in a very big way for for many, many Ohioans.
Casey?
So, thank you. I would say this is a, it's a great example. There have been four speakers of the House over the last two plus years. There have, I'm on my third speaker already. I think it's a great example of one party rule and how that's worked out for Ohioans. Not well. That my two choices for speaker, since since I'm taking a shot on that, I'll go ahead and respond. My two choices for speaker were were Larry Householder or the handpicked successor of the previously booted speaker for corruption, who did no outreach to Democrats whatsoever. Householder did outreach to Democrats and promised bipartisanship. Of course, I didn't know about the HB 6 situation or any of the corruption that was to come. Nobody did, I think, at that time outside of his enterprise. So I think it, you know, it was bad, I had two bad choices. That's what I would say. And Paige, to get at the heart of your question, I would say the campaign finance reform and removing the influence of money in politics and shining light, they say sunshine and sunlight are the best disinfectant, is what that is what I'm supportive of. Removing the dark money component, which is what fueled a lot of the corruption that we've seen over the last several speakers of the House would be a fantastic thing. And that's one of the bills that I want to work on in the next General Assembly is campaign finance reform and the elimination of dark money and much more transparency throughout our politics. So that's that's going to be my focus. And hopefully, hopefully, we have some better choices next General Assembly for speaker.
Thank you.
Quick comment? Would that be okay, Dave?
Sure.
I have to say that Speaker Cup has personally driven to my house to sit down and speak with me. So I could talk to him about his background, about his objectives. I reached out to him immediately upon learning about, you know, what Larry Householder had done. I called now Speaker Cup as Representative Cup before he had even decided to run for speaker. Because I looked at his background, I saw that he has a prosecutor, as a Supreme Court Justice, as President Pro Tem in the Senate. He had an impeccable background. So I was very supportive of this, of Speaker Cup. And one of the main reasons I did that is because we had to make sure that we restored integrity and trust in the speakership at the Ohio House. So I was very supportive of the current speaker.
Thank you, Bill. Well, at this time, I'm going to close the floor for, oh, Latif, you have one more question?
Yes, and this will, all of the three candidates. The Ohio Healthy Start, formerly known as Ohio CHIP. Is there any area that you all would like to see changed as it relates to that program?
I'm going to open it up to Bill first, if you could respond to that question and keep it within one minute.
I will be quite frank, I'm not an expert on it. I will say one thing, just to be very realistic. This is going to be a really, really tough budget year for Ohio. We are going to be using, I'm sure, a portion of our $2.7 billion rainy day fund. We're not going to see generally expansions in most programs. What I would be very interested in is anything that would be able to be changed programmatically to make it more effective, not necessarily more expensive.
So that's a, it's a Medicaid program, actually, Latif, I'm sure about, but for those who don't know. So I think it's very critical that we have representatives who want to protect the Medicaid expansion that we've done and proper funding for it, adequate funding for it in the state, which a portion of that funding does come from the state. So it should be an absolute priority for kids' healthcare that that remain a priority in Ohio, that we keep Medicaid expansion so programs like the CHIP can continue. Where I haven't been able to work on, you know, I've been a defender of that, of Medicaid expansion. But I've worked in a more targeted way so far, like Madeline's Law, which is the expansion of children's healthcare coverage. So that's that's the work that I've done so far, but I would absolutely like to continue to protect and expand that coverage and and to get as many kids care as we can.
Thank you. I would say, you know, I've been to DC to lobby for CHIP. So I've I've talked to, you know, it was probably two or three years ago, I went and lobbied Ohio legislators on the importance of CHIP funding. At that time, there was a delay in getting, it's a fiscal federal program, so there was a delay in getting that funding and a lot of communities, states didn't, weren't sure what was going to happen with that. And for hospitals and healthcare systems, that can be a a really bad situation if you don't know how you're going to care for people in the community and you're relying on funding that that for whatever reason has been delayed and is not secured. I would say that I think that block grants are very important. I like the idea of states being able to control where they would like to put their funds in healthcare. Each state is a little different. Our diversity and in our health status, socioeconomics, they vary across states and across communities. So I think giving the power to the states to determine how to best meet the needs of the community is very important, and I would fight that.
Thank you, Beth. I'd like to thank all the candidates for coming out today and speaking to us. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Steve.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, candidates. Thank you for joining us, and we appreciate your public service. It's really appreciated, and thank you, and good luck with running for office. With that being said, we have just a couple announcements to make. You're more than welcome to hang with us or leave if you have something to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. As, uh, I've mentioned before, uh, I'm gonna need some volunteers to install some storefronts. Uh, Dave Fike, if you could let me know what works best for you, I was thinking that maybe an hour or so, uh, in the evenings. Um, you know, uh, I guess we need to, uh, get ahold of Kimpton and see how many exactly they have, but my goal is at least to get the storefronts that are made, uh, not the blanks, get those installed within the next couple weeks. So let me know what works best for you, because I know you're busy with.
Dale, I only have four storefronts at this time, and I know others made, so I need to check with them to see what's available, and I'll, uh, I'll text you, uh, and so you can at least correspond with the group and let them know, and get you a timeframe that'll work.
Sounds good. Okay, then we'll move forward with that.
Steve, what, uh, what date are you talking about, for Dave?
That is still up in the air.
Okay.
Tuesdays or Thursdays are working the best for me during the week.
Okay. So we got four of those left, besides this week. So let's just pick a guy, I mean, we can probably put those four up right away, you know, within a couple hours. So just let me know what works best for you, and then I'll throw an announcement out there.
Okay.
Uh, we're working on the dictionary project, Joe Clark and I have been working on that. We have a count from Nerdonia, I'm actually waiting on a reply from St. Barnabas. Once I get that, we'll be ordering the dictionaries for third graders, and we'll get rolling with that. Next meeting is October 20th, uh, next Tuesday. Uh, we're gonna have Summit County Executive John Chapman and Eileen Shapiro, Summit County District One Rita Darrow and Ron Kohler, and Summit County Prosecutor Sharon Bevan Welsh, or Walsh, and Michael Washington. So we'll have a, uh, a packed meeting for, uh, for next week, so you won't want to miss it. And please keep in mind, February 6th is the reverse raffle. So we're still hoping, uh, things open up for that, we can have that, uh, without doing it virtually. Anybody else have any announcements that I am missing that they would like to add?
Hey, honey, thank you.
We're having a board meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, God, I didn't pull up that date. I believe the board meeting is that next Friday? I will put that announcement out there, I'm sorry, Debbie.
It's this Friday, I'm pretty sure.
It is this Friday, huh?
My calendar, I'm pretty sure.
I thought I avoided that because, uh, I'm gonna be out of town. Thought I made it for the.
Yeah. No, it's always this third Friday, so, but we can change it.
If you want to move it over, move it over.
Yeah, let's move it to the following Friday.
Okay.
Because I'm gonna be in West Virginia, and sometimes I just don't get very good connections up there. So let's go ahead and move it to the following Friday. All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, enjoy the beautiful October fall day, it's gorgeous out there, and, uh, that being said, let's, uh, if you could join me in the four-way test. Please join me, Rotarians, of the things we think say are due. First is a truth. Second is a true. Third will. Thank you, everybody, meetings adjourned, enjoy your day, thanks.
Adios.
Thanks for having me, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye.